Item 8B, we're going to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule related to construction, water meters, and backflow device inspections, and conduct a discussion regarding building permit fees previously approved by the city council.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the master fee schedule compiles city council approved fees for city services provided to residents and other members of the public. The 2017-18 master fee schedule update was approved by a city council resolution on June 13th of this year, and as a result, updated fees for fire, police, recreation, and communities, community development have been in place since July 1st. At the time that the city council approved these fee increases, the council requested consideration of two additional fees related to Appendix 1 of the master fee schedule for water service. These included adding a charge related to construction water meters, and secondly, a new fee related to inspection costs for backflow devices. At the same time, on June 13th, the city council voted to revisit the approval of the building permit fees and asked for additional information on the fee increase to assist city council discussion. As it relates to construction water meters, the city provides construction water meters upon request to contractors operating in the city. In accordance with the fee schedule, the city collects and holds deposits equal to the cost of the meter, and then the contractors are charged for both water service charge and the quantity charge for water used similar to any other customer. The only difference is the contractor is billed monthly for the service charge, and then the quantity charge is charged when the meter is turned in before the deposit is returned. They are charged, the quantity charge. We checked on a number of agencies in San Mateo County, South City, Millbrae, Burlingame, Redwood City, and all of these agencies charge in similar manner to what the city, San Bruno, currently does. There was a question of the, on June 13th, there was a question about including an additional charge, a rental charge, or some form of charge. The city council utility subcommittee, council member O'Connell and council member Marty Medina met on August 23rd to discuss adding a fee for the ability to use construction water meters. The committee, I'll allow them to speak for themselves, but just in very summary form, felt that a fee that would recoup the city cost for connecting and disconnecting these construction meters to the hydrant was an appropriate charge, and looking into what that cost would be, staff determined that the cost would be a charge of $125 for the connect and disconnect charge. So, on the, and I'll go through my report, and then if the committee would add to my comments, I would appreciate that. As it relates to inspection costs for backflow preventers, back in November of 2016, the city council adopted an ordinance establishing water supply cross-connection and backflow prevention standards, designated the city as an administrative and enforcement authority, and setting inspection, testing, and maintenance and reporting procedures. The city itself has a very definitive interest in the backflow prevention devices operating properly to avoid any contamination to our water supply. So this effort has been really a state requirement, but the city itself has strong interests in a robust and effective program. At that time, back in November, while the city has these interests, the city council did approve a contract with the San Mateo County Environmental Health Services, with the county, to actually complete the inspections, testing, and all of the various mandated reporting requirements to the state and otherwise. So there is a requirement, in addition to anything that the city or county require, there is a requirement the device owners themselves to arrange for testing of all of these devices done on an annual basis with reports submitted to the county, and the device owners are responsible for the cost. Every one of them is responsible for the cost of these inspection, of these inspection services. The total cost that the city of San Bruno has agreed to pay the county for their overall inspection and compliance services is $42,500. Again, back on June 13th, there was a question raised by the council about our ability to recoup that cost of $42,500 in some manner from these device owners. Again, the subcommittee met, and staff had determined that two approaches, if there was a desire on the city council's part to actually have such a fee, one approach would look at the 50 annual surveys that are done by the county, and to charge for those 50 field surveys done by the county, and just dividing 50 into the $42,000 would be a charge of about $850. So that was, that was one approach that was looked at if, if there was a desire to have such a fee. An alternative approach resulted what was reported to be an annual cost of about $140, and that was really based on information that I understood, staff understood at the time, was that there were a total of 300 devices that require inspection in San Bruno. Since the committee meeting, I've now come to understand that I was incorrect, that the number of devices, there are, it is true, there's about 300 backflow devices at meters in the city, but there's an additional about 200 backflow devices that are not connected at the meter that would be at some other location, and so there's actually a total of 500 inspection, devices that require inspections. So again, your material, if the council would want to have set such a fee, I had included the charge of $140, but if they wanted such a charge, I think the more appropriate charge would be $85 if that 500 devices was divided among there. As far as the utility subcommittee is concerned, they did not reach a consensus recommendation on the fee. One committee member believed that as, consistent with other San Mateo County cities where there is no charge, or there is not a recouping of this charge, the county charge, that there should be no fee, and then the other committee member, again, recommended that this $140 charge would be appropriate, and again, if you wanted to go forward, my new thought would be it should be 85 rather than 140. So, and again, would allow the committee to speak on that matter. If I could just continue on and just give some additional information related to the building permit question. The agencies are allowed to set fees that do not exceed the cost of providing the service, and there are really a number of ways that is done. One is through a cost of service study, and then those are done periodically by most agencies, there's a cost of service study. Beyond that, annual changes could reflect the change in inflation, change in CPI over a period of time, the change in the direct cost for the service, or surveys of nearby jurisdictions and charges that they have. And since the city council formally adopted the master fee program and annual reviews in 2001, the city council has selected one of those three options: inflation, direct cost of service, or surveys of other jurisdictions in setting fees on an annual basis. In 2006, the city of San Bruno retained a consultant to perform a cost of service study directly related to building, or to community development fees, and in January of 2007, the building fees were adjusted based on that study. And the fees have not been adjusted, building permit fees have not been adjusted since January of 2007. The community development staff recommended on June 13th that building permit fees be adjusted based on a survey of several other San Mateo County cities. Redwood City was looked at and had some of the highest fees, while Burlingame was the lowest of those that they surveyed. Several cities fell in between those two. The city, the department recommended that San Bruno's fees be adjusted generally in line with the lower fees that are in place at the city of Burlingame. And across the peninsula, low fees are not really correlated with more development activity, and higher fees are not associated with less development, development activity. The net impact of changing the fees and increasing the fees was an 18% increase in revenue from building permit fees. So generally, the general increase was about 18%. Staff did compare for the prior year total expenditures in the building inspection division compared with total revenues, and there was a substantial shortfall, and even if one would eliminate from the calculation code enforcement positions in the division and factor in the increase, the total fees generated are less than the cost of providing the service. As I mentioned, historically, the council has looked at other indices or changes in looking at fee adjustments. So alternatively, to the 18% increase based on survey results, if the council had considered changes in CPI since 2006, '07, since 2006, '07, there's, in those indices, there's been a 26% increase over that time, exceeding the 18% that was approved. If the city council alternatively, again, had looked at the direct cost of service, looking at the total compensation and the change in total compensation for a building inspector position since 2006, '07, the salary and cost benefit, or salary and benefit costs have increased by 50% since 2006, '07, again, less than the 18% adjustment that was approved by the council. So in summary, I mean, it is the city council that determines the appropriate fee for all city services. But facts determine what is fair and reasonable, and there is no evidence that the building permit fee increase approved by the council on June 13th are anything but fair and reasonable. The evidence does not support any concern of gouging residents. Further, there is no evidence that the building permit fee increase will slow development activity. Many, many, many factors go into decisions on development locations, and this increase, again, less than the cost of the city providing the service, would reasonably have no impact on the level of development activity anticipated within the city. Finally, the finance department, for several months now, and got diverted for a couple of reasons unfortunately, is undertaking a cost allocation and a cost of service study, and will, the department will commit that this study will be completed in 2018 in time to be fully evaluated and considered prior to commencing the 2018-19 budget process, which would include, again, the consideration of any changes in all departments in the master fee schedule. With that, I would answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Jim this time? No? Okay, this time we're going to open the public, you have a question?
I was, I was wondering if there was going to be any questions on the previous, the backflows, the meters. Because if not, I'd like to make my point on why I was, I guess consistently against the raising of billing permit fees. And my question to Jim and possibly to other staff is, has there been a calculation of direct cost for a billing inspection based on the cost of a building permit? Because in the staff report, the building permit fees were raised because they hadn't been raised in a significant amount of time. Had no study on the actual costs, and so, you know, a lot of your dissertation was based on direct cost of service. So my argument for many years now has been, has there been, you know, a study of direct cost of service of a building inspector per project? Building permit fees are calculated based on valuation, not on how many inspections a particular project gets. The inspector gets paid based on their delivery of services inspecting a project, and as many times can inspect many projects, you know, throughout the day, and in some cases, a project that has been valued at a certain amount in comparison to another project does not get any more inspections than the other, even though the permit fee is significantly higher. So, this is just, you know, my soapbox, because it's, you know, it's prevalent in almost, you know, every, you know, municipality. And although it may be true that certain cities are more than others, it's still based on the same criteria, valuation, and then they come to a, you know, a cost of the project, a value of the project, and they plug in where it falls within, within the table in the fee schedule. Nowhere does it determine what the cost of labor, what the cost of the employee for that project. So that's just my point. To say that, you know, that we're coming up short, a 50% increase in, in building inspector salaries and benefits, and only an 18% increase, is inaccurate. It's inaccurate, because it's not, it's not the same calculation. And I'm, I'm done. That's my point. I'm not saying that we're gouging people, or I'm just saying that the system gouges, you know, does not, you know, is not based on the actual cost.
So, I guess I'm struggling to answer part of your question because, just of the way you worded the question. So the last time, as I said, the last time that a cost of service study was done related to building permits was in 2016, it was 2006, and the result of that study was implemented in January of 2007 in the master fee schedule. I guess where I'm, where I'm struggling with, and just the methodology. The methodology is taking the direct cost of providing the service, and any and all overhead cost for the individual providing the service, the cost of the car, the cost of the city council taking actions, anything related to, anything related to that person, the human resources costs, anything related to the cost of providing that service is included in, as overhead. And that is the basis on which cost of service studies are done everywhere. I mean, that is the basis. And I sort of thought your question was, does the consultant, or do they go out and do a time and motion study of what the inspector actually does, and how much time they spend on a particular job? That is not the methodology that is universally used. And so, you know, if that results in your mind in a, in a false fee, that's probably true, but, but what is done is capturing all of the direct costs and all the overhead costs of providing the service. And I would say that's, again, universally the way it's
Mr. Larry, I can appreciate how you're trying to justify how we've come up with the fees, or, you know, perpetuity here for, for as long as it's been involved, but no other department does that. And, I mean, and I've been in business for over 30 years, and I've never understood why a permit fee, even a plan review fee, is based on a value. It's based on a value, and there is no calculation of how, of how much actual time is spent in performing the service, throw in all the overhead that you want into that. But I would venture to, I would venture to guess that there has been no cost allocation study of even a handful of, of projects that have been charged plan review fees and permit fees.
Could I just ask for clarification here? Are you suggesting that other municipalities charge based on numbers of inspection or time and work?
No, no, I'm not. I know, like, every 90, probably 99.9%
Based on valuation.
Is based on valuation.
Same as we do.
Same as we do.
Right, and
Maybe there's probably a smaller community that, you know, can have a fixed fee or a, you know, a more adjusted fee based on the type of project, but, uh...
Right, so, so the cost evaluation is done based on, as the director indicated, based on the direct and indirect costs associated with delivering inspections, and the valuation collection, or the collection base of, of building permit fees based on valuation, is done in, as a standard in the industry, based on a proxy, if you will, for the complexity of the various inspections. As you, as you know, the number of inspections, the actual precise number of inspections can be estimated based on the complexity of the project, there's at least X number of inspections that would be required, but the actual number of inspections for this project or that project of similar type may actually be very different. And so, the building permit fees, as you indicate, are based on project valuation. I'm assuming in order to essentially level the playing field and provide a standard basis for collection, our evaluation is done through the cost of services study in order to demonstrate that we are not collecting more than the actual, in this case, aggregate cost of delivery of the service. And I believe that is also the standard by which other municipalities evaluate their costs and set their fees, as, as is the collection.
There's two costs that I'm familiar with. The cost, you know, the, the cost of construction that the city abides by or calculates the valuation, whether it's new construction, remodel construction, and they calculate, you can determine the, the amount of, you know, the scope of the project, and then you can determine, you know, what that value of construction will be. It's the table that you apply that valuation to, which is what the 18% increase was. So now, you've got this value of a project, and you're, now that table, you know, what that rate is based on the, the value of the, of the construction, is, you know, is where, you know, where I'm questioning things, and how is that developed? And so what you're saying, and, I mean, I have to, I mean, I have to accept it, is that, that, that cost is, is an accumulation of the overhead and, you know, and the cost, you know, of the cost of the service.
David, did you have a comment?
I wish I was an expert now, but, but I'm not, so
No, and, and, you know, and there's, and it's not, I mean, it's not going to happen now, and it's probably not going to happen in a, in a generation, because, you know, this, this has been going on, you know, for years, and that's why I said, this is my soapbox, this is my, you know, my issue, because I'm sitting up here to, to make that determination. I don't have that opportunity in other jurisdictions.
I feel better that you said everybody is gouging their, their residents, rather than just us, that makes me feel better, but
Yeah, and I'm really surprised that Redwood City is there, but, and I
I guess I, I guess I just wanted to, I guess the, the question of value, valuation, I understand as it relates to plan check and some other, but the vast majority of the fees that were adjusted on June 13th were for building permit fees, for the installation of, relocation of a vent, for, I mean, just going through the various building permits, and, or plumbing, and it
Mr. Larry, you don't want to go down that road, because if you start talking about plan review fee, then you're really going to get me upset, because that's also based on, on valuation, and it's a percentage of building permit, and that's totally out of character, so. It's, it's a calculation that I have to live with, that the residents have to live with, and they have to budget into, you know, into their, into their development, so, into their projects, so. I, I gave it my, my best shot, so.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Marty?
Sorry. So make sure I understand this. So in 2006, the model was completed based on what everybody does, and valuation is included in that. So here we are, we're going to have a new study continuing on that same model. Is that correct?
2006 was cost of service study. What was the cost of providing the service?
Right, and we're having another one that'll be due in 2018. Okay, so maybe some analysis at some point of the number of inspections would be helpful to help determine that cost, because, I agree, just because everybody's charging it doesn't make it right. It doesn't make sense that, I mean, it should be on the number of inspections that your inspector has to go back to do the rough plumbing, the, all the other inspections they do. So I'm hoping that we'll have some analysis of, of those costs of services. And the other part, and we're not talking about today, Ken, would be the plan checking, and I agree, like, it should be based on the checking, and I agree, like, it should be based on the actual time that the plan checker is spending to review those plans. That's the cost of the service. All the overhead things, yes, we could, you know, allocate a certain percentage, I, I don't think I've, anybody would have an argument with that, but based on sole valuation, that seems, it seems just wrong. So, this new, um, cost of services study, it's just revamping what was done before. Are they gonna look at each different type of permit, and like, well, that takes six inspections, and that one takes three? So, just because that's more expensive, it gets the highest billing permit fee? It seems like we should have a more defined, uh, cost associated for the number of inspections actually incurred. But that's...
The current, the, the current scope of this study does not include that level of, um, analysis.
Why not?
Because it's not, for one reason, not typically how cost of service analysis is done. It's based on the, the cost of performing the service, not base, it's, it's not a detailed evaluation of how building service, uh, the, the, building inspections and projects, and the, what the building code requires with respect to, um, with, with respect to ins- inspections for a project. It's, it's, it's based at a different level in order to validate that the city is, is essentially not charging more than the
Got, got it, got it.
Cost of the service. I don't know, again, neither Mr. Larry or I are experts in this field, but we could certainly talk to the consultant who is performing this study to get a better idea of whether that is an analysis that they could perform, and, um, whether that could be included within the existing scope. I, I, I can tell you that it is not now included in the existing scope.
Getting, getting to hear what that would be and how much it would cost would be, I think, valuable to bring back.
We, we can, we can speak with the consultant about that.
Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? All right, this time we're gonna open the public hearing, but anyone from the public elect to address the counsel on this matter, item? Okay, if we close the public hearing, it'll be precluded from talking to us again on this item. Any action?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any further discussion or action by the counsel?
I, I wanted to touch base on the backflow, it was something that I had brought up to have a better understanding of, the $42,500 that we paid to the county. So, um, in talking to staff, my understanding is, is where, where I understood it to be when I was in South City, in business, or anybody in the county, it is required on an annual inspection. It needs to be tagged for that year, 2017, for example, for the County of San Mateo, they're $15 for a backflow tag, County of San Francisco, they're 12. It depends on jurisdiction on the cost, in or free. My understanding is, what we have gone to the county to do, is that out of the 300, which is now 500, but the 300 that are gone to the meters, about 50 of those on a rotation type cycle, that they're going back out, and I'm gonna say like a trust but verify, and to ensure that everything is working operationally, and again, there's no contamination. Is that accurate?
Let me see if I can clarify. So the contract with the county includes a variety of functions, and the best way to describe that service is backflow program management. That service generally, let me back up just a minute. The annual inspection that is a responsibility of every property owner at a premise where a backflow is required, is the responsibility of the property owner that, um, certifying and, um, assuring that the inspection is done, is done by the property owner, and is not done directly by the county. The county's, uh, contract with the city is to assure that the program, um, overall is managed properly according, according to state requirements, and that the water supply thereby is being protected from the potential for backflow and contamination of the, of the water supply. The, the county's work with respect to any particular location, um, would have to do with, as you just indicated, assuring that, um, those inspections are done correctly, that any deficiencies are corrected, um, that reports are prepared and filed with the state properly for the program overall, and, um, and, and dealing with any, um, issues related to the number of backflows, uh, devices, where they need to be located, and, and again, their property, their proper operations.
Right, so I see this as a two-level. So the homeowner and/or a commercial property
That's correct.
Has that obligation annually to contract with a private licensed entity
Correct.
That's been approved by the agency, county, uh, to go out there and, whatever the fee is by that vendor, and go ahead and certify and tag.
That's correct.
Now, on the other side, the $42,500 is the county that comes in, oversees it, because it's still the vendor's obligation to turn in the certificate forms to the various jurisdiction. So the county's coming in to verify more or less, and to spot check, I'll call it, so many out of the 300 to ensure that it is operating, it is functioning, and there's no contamination. So realistically, if, whether it was 140, now it's 85, so that went down, that was impressive. So, even if it's 85, in essence, a homeowner or business would say, well, now I'm getting hit twice. I've got the county obligation to the state, now I've got the city imposing an additional fee, which even, I don't get inspected on an annual basis, it may not be for five years. So, that's what I wanted to get clarification on, is that. Now, I think we have a, a better understanding on how, how that functions, and to my knowledge too, cities do not go in and say, okay, you already gotta pay that, now we're gonna pay this. There are some jurisdictions that actually will offer these, uh, backflow tags for free, only a couple, but there are a couple in the county. So, I think that helps me understand better that clarification.
There's just one fairly modest clarification to what you just said. All of that is, is actually, our understanding, so the program match. The, um, responsibility for program management, and for assurance to the state of the safety, the security, and lack of contamination in the water supply, is the city's. The city is the water supplier, the water purveyor, and it is our responsibility to assure that the program operates correctly, reports are filed properly, and that, uh, the system is...
And you're right, because it is our water company, so we have an obligation to do
It is our obligation, and we contract for the oversight of that program on our beha, on our behalf to the county. So the county is working for us in terms of, to assure that the water system is meeting its obligations
And we're compliant.
And, uh, being compliant, right.
Anything else? Marty?
So, I was in favor of having the, to charge for this service. The way I, the way I looked at it was, if you don't have a water, a backflow device, great, most of us don't, out of, what's, 12,000 accounts, we have 500 of them. And this cost is associated with making sure that that cross connection doesn't happen, where we're gonna get some water seeping back into our sterile system. So that cost, in my opinion, is, should be borne by those that are getting that service. It's great that it's reduced down from 140 to 85, I think that, that's, that's, um, good to hear, but in cost recovery, and as, as we raise our rates for our residents, I think it's very important that we make sure that what they have to pay is just for that service that they get. It's not the 43,000, because I don't have a water, uh, backflow preventer, I don't, I mean, if you have one, you should be paying for that, that service, and that's why I brought it forward to, to think that we should be paying, or we should be charging those that have them, um, that 80, that, well, now it's $85 yearly fee.
Irene?
And I was the person who said no. So, I will, my, my reasonings was that, um, with this, okay, so it's less, you would pay 80, but you would pay 80 a year, even though you may not get an inspection within five to six, or even 10 years, since there's 500 backflow. So you can pay $80 a year for 10 years and get one inspection. Is that correct?
Or not? Yes, it is correct.
Okay, so, to me, I'm paying for something I'm not getting. And, that's one aspect of it. And then the other aspect of it is, the reason to have the backflow device and the inspection is to protect the rest of us, the, the water supply for the rest of us, for all of us, not just for that one person. So, those were my reasonings for why not to, um, put this fee onto the users or the people who have backflow devices.
If I could clarify again, just, uh, perhaps it's just terminology, um, the, there is the potential for the county to perform service to assure that your backflow at a particular premise, to assure that you are, uh, you, you are being compliant, and your backflow is compliant with state reg, regulations and requirements. However, the county contract is really, um, more, uh, more, um, properly, I would say, defined as, uh, assuring that those who have the potential of creating impact to the system are managing those backflow devices and avoiding that impact properly. So it's not really, they're not receiving a service per se, the, they are, um, being, if, if this, if the $85 was approved, that cost would be, uh, related to their impact on the system, or the potential for their impact on the system, as opposed to, uh, specifically, as, as you point out, the service that they receive, because actually, if, there's a possibility that they don't get ins, inspected, um, if they are, uh, trouble-free and, um, don't rise to the level of, uh, something that needs to be addressed at that particular location over a long period of time.
So, it's up to the rest of the council, those, that was our reasoning.
Okay. Rico, how do you feel about?
No, specifically on the backflow? Is that what you're asking, or just in general?
Yes.
I mean, as far as the, there was two recommendations, one, I concur with the, the subcommittee, um, on the first one that was discussed, and on the second one, I was, and again, I was trying to understand the backflow. But what I do have a hard time is, that they already have an obligation for an annual cost, and then to, almost like, it's, okay, so you've got a backflow which helps a lot of people, and now you're getting a, a second charge for having that in addition to what you already pay for to the county, and you don't even get it. Out of seven years, you may not see it once. So, it is an obligation of us having our water company to meet that obligation and, and the state requirements. So for that, unless we get out of the water business, we have that obligation as, as a city, and as, as owning our water department. So, I almost see it as a double hit to a person with a backflow device. So, I would be satisfied at this time with the, uh, commentary, and, and not to charge an additional charge to those that have backflow devices that are already paying for annual, um, cer, certifications.
Okay. I agree. Ken?
I, I, I think what we're saying is that we're in favor of, uh, the recommendation for the construction meters.
No, we're just, this is just backflow.
Well, they're both lumped into the one staff report, so... But I, I agree, I agree on what, uh, Rico said.
Which is the same as Irene, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Anything else? Go ahead.
Well, that was, do you want that as a separate vote?
How do you want that? Do you want that as a separate, um, item mark, or? Yeah.
Uh, it'd probably be helpful to have a separate vote on the, on the two items, just so, a voice vo, voice, voice vote would be fine.
Okay.
Okay, but we're looking for a resolution here?
So...
And they're both included in the resolution? To the chair? Marty?
I'd like to introduce the resolution to increase, uh, the construction water meter cost as specified in the report.
Councilmember Marty Medina? Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Abara?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
So we just leave it?
Can we introduce it? We can introduce it?
So the, the...
We just approve one part?
Ah, okay.
Councilmember Medina only introduced the resolution with one of the items.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Can we just have a motion, Mark? We can go on it?
Yes, so if the council is interested in imposing the backflow prevention device fee, then it should be, there should be a motion
Okay.
To do so at the reduced level of, was it 85?
But if it's not going to be, does it have to be a motion if it's?
If there's no change.
But if there's no change?
If there's no change, then I don't think there's any need for an action.
Okay.
Through, through the chair. I'd like to introduce a resolution to have inspection cost for backflow devices.
Well, introduced a resolution for that, so we need a, a roll call?
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
No.
Councilmember O'Connell?
No.
Vice Mayor Abara?
No.
Mayor Ruane?
No. Item number nine is...